Welcome to the Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce sponsored candidate forum. This session is for city council candidates in Ward 1. My name is Deborah Bowles. I am the president/CEO of the Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce that proudly serves all of Morrison County. Joining us today are two of the three candidates that are running for city council Ward 1. We have Robin Hensel to my left and Raquel Lundberg to my right. Incumbent Lauren Boyum is not able to attend today due to some scheduling conflicts. This is a forum, not a debate. The candidates will share with us why they feel they are the best person to represent their ward, not to address their opponent's strengths or perceived shortcomings. The candidates have been provided the questions in advance. A coin toss was done to determine who would respond to the first question first, and that was run by Robin Hensel. The chamber reminds the public that the views expressed by the candidates during this session are those of the individual and not those of the Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. Each candidate has four minutes to respond to the questions. We have a timer that is taking note of that. If they feel they would like to respond to what their opponent has said, they have 30 seconds to respond to that. So at this time, we'll go ahead and get started. And the first question will be answered by Robin Hensel. So Robin, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running for city council.
Well, thank you to the chamber for hosting this. Thank you for Raquel for showing up. I'm disappointed that the incumbent Lauren Boyum chose to not be with us today. My reason for running for council, the main reason is this. For the last five and a half years, I've seen how the city council operates, and I think I can do better than the incumbent. I've seen grant money scooped up by the people who don't need it in this city, while the truly needy are left behind. Grant money should always improve the lives of all residents, not just a few in the know, because that's how the money gets scooped up. And diverse communities thrive. Over the years, I've attended a number of events throughout the state, including the metro area. This last year, I attended a large one that was hosted in part by the governor of the state. I spoke with Human Rights Commissioner Kevin Lindsey in an attempt to bring the diverse ideas and the thriving community that welcomes all people of all face, of all colors, to here. We need a welcoming area. We need a diverse community to thrive, just as any other city in any state does. And I think that's what's sorely lacking in our community, that there are not enough people who are stepping up to make sure that everyone is welcome here regardless of their race and their color and their ethnicity and their religion and their gender and all of those factors. And I appreciate every vote that I might get this year, and thank you for that opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Robin. And now we'll go to Raquel Lundberg. Please tell us, introduce yourself and tell us why you are running for city council.
Good morning. My name is Raquel Lundberg. My husband and I own and operate the Waller House Inn, bed and breakfast, here in Little Falls. 301 Third Street Southeast, Little Falls is my 34th address. I have lived in two countries besides the U.S. I was not born in the U.S. And after having lived all these places, I landed in Little Falls. And Little Falls, I have to tell you from the depths of my heart, I am finally home. Little Falls is home. Living in a big old house is an itty-bitty little piece of making Little Falls home. What really makes it home is this community, and I have fallen in love with this community. Two years ago, at the last election, one of my community members approached me and asked me to run for city council. This is not on my bucket list. It's not, up until two years ago, it wasn't even on my radar. I think that's one reason why I am such a great candidate for this job. I'm not politically motivated, I'm community motivated. I love this community. I have a lot of great ideas. I own a business here with my husband. We have been successful, and I have, we're in the tourism industry, and I really believe that there's a lot of money to be made in the tourism industry. And I, because of that, have a lot of great ideas and positive ideas. I'm involved in the community, and I love the community, and I just have the community's very best interests in my heart. I want to see it grow and be a prosperous and healthy and safe place for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Raquel. And being we are rotating the questions, we're going to go back, and Raquel will answer question number two first. And that question is, what do you see as the biggest three challenges facing the city of Little Falls?
I think there might be more than three, but Little Falls is the third oldest city in the state of Minnesota, and our infrastructure is old, and it needs to be updated. We've got underground, beautiful, beautiful brick and stonework underground for our storm sewer to runoff, and it's not going into the storm drains. I think that's something that needs to be addressed, and it is being addressed on the northeast side of town. I think it's also really important to raise our tax base. I think that tourism is a great way to do that. Without that tax base, we don't have the money to do the improvements. Our water treatment plant needs work. It hasn't had any work done on it in 20 years. There's a sign here at Little Falls. I tell all of our guests at the Waller House Inn that Little Falls has the best water in the state, and there's this plaque at City Hall to prove it. We do have excellent water, and we want to keep it excellent, so we need to put money into our water treatment plant. And I think jobs is another area that Little Falls has challenged, jobs where people can earn a livable wage. And again, I think tourism is one way to create these jobs. So in a nutshell, infrastructure, tax base, and jobs.
Okay, thank you, Raquel. Robin, what do you see as the three biggest challenges facing the city of Little Falls?
In this order, illegitimate government expressed in three ways, misappropriation of grants and fees, lack of transparency on the part of the council and staff, potential massive health complications for populations surrounding Camp Ripley where near constant live-fire military training exercises compromise the air, soil, and the water of central Minnesota. Camp Ripley has been in violation of the Morrison County ordinance that requires them to have two demolition permits. These permits are part of an effort to protect all of us, including you. Since January 1, 2016, they have been in violation of those ordinances. One of those mandated permits is for chemical contaminants. Morrison County had to sue Camp Ripley in an attempt to force compliance. That's it.
That's it. All right, thank you, Robin. And then again, as we rotate, the next question will go to Robin first. What experience do you have in holding public office or being an officer for any entity? How comfortable are you with the procedures to introduce motions, make amendments, and follow normal operating procedures with confidence?
Having attended city council work sessions and meetings and hundreds of city meetings, committee meetings, for over five years, I'm very familiar with parliamentary procedure. The incumbent is not here today to answer this question. I've also learned how not to conduct meetings by looking at and observing how the city council, the former mayor, the current mayor, the former council, the current council operate during their meetings. I'll give you one example how meetings should not be conducted. With us today in the audience is Teresa Scorsese, and on June 17 of 2013, approximately two to three weeks before that meeting, she jumped through all the necessary hoops, including contacting the city administrator, to get on the agenda, as was published in the Morrison County Record, the official city newspaper, so that she could give her very short statement on why she felt that the sister city committee funds should be either eliminated or diverted to a different cause. During the meeting, she was not allowed to speak at all. In fact, the mayor, the former mayor Kathy Van Rissingham, called on the sister city committee president to speak for over 12 minutes. Then, the question was called by the incumbent Lauren Boyum. After the former president, Don Klinker stated that they didn't need to hear what Teresa had to say, which directly violated her right to free speech. That's a shame that this council has in the past and continues to operate in violation of our U.S. Constitution. I can do better. I promise I will do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Raquel, what experience do you bring to the table?
Before we move to Little Falls, I served on the church council at St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church in Minneapolis, and three of those years, I was the secretary. I served four years on the board of directors at Great River Arts here in Little Falls. I am currently on the board of directors at the Convention and Visitors Bureau in Little Falls. I've been on it three years, and the last year, I've been president of the board. I have a pretty comfortable and good understanding of the operating procedures for running a meeting.
Okay, thank you. And we will come back to you again. This time, the question pertains to the athletic recreational complex that is being worked on on the north part of Little Falls here. Are you supportive of the possibility of a local sales tax to complete this project or to help fund the project?
The community of Little Falls voted down this complex, and I believe that the overwhelming feeling was that Little Falls couldn't afford it. I believe that growth and change are really important for our community, and I think it is important to look for other options for funding this. There is the possibility of adding a half a percent sales tax to sales within the city limits has been talked about. St. Cloud and Brainerd both do it. That's, I think, how they funded the splash pad in St. Cloud. I'm not opposed to it, but I think before any kind of decision is made, that some more homework needs to be done. We have the exchange arena in Little Falls that was, I believe, built by the exchange club. We do have service organizations that we can look to. We can look for some grant money. I think there are a lot of options. And in addition to having a complex like this built in Little Falls, I think we need to look at other infrastructure as well, because the city of Little Falls has just over 300 hotel beds, and if we get a big complex like that, where are people going to sleep when they're here? The hotel beds in Little Falls have been full pretty much all summer. We've had an exceptionally busy summer. So in addition to putting in a big athletic complex and hopefully a bike trail down the road, I think we need to look at some other issues as well, more hotels, more restaurants, places for people to spend their money when they come into Little Falls.
Great, thank you, Raquel. Robin, your thoughts?
I'm not opposed to a regional sports complex if we could afford it. However, the proposed complex will cost over $10 million plus unknown ongoing maintenance costs. We're facing necessary mandatory water and sewer infrastructure improvements, which will cost tens of millions, and according to Jerry Nafla, who is a current member of the council, he just stated in the earlier forum that our city, it will cost our city for wastewater alone, nine to 10 million mandatory improvements, not optional. And for a drinking water plant, 10 to 20 million. Very little of that do we have any. The city is still about $20 million in debt. That matters. If a local option sales tax is to be pursued, which has been suggested by the elected officials and art committee members, it should only be for our water and sewer needs, infrastructure repairs, and not a sports complex the city's cash-strapped residents cannot afford.
Okay, thank you, Robin.
And I want to add one thing. I'm also opposed to what your city council, city administrator, and staff is getting ready to do, and that is, in the next budget for 2017, it was suggested in one of the most recent work sessions that this city council may approve $50,000 of your tax dollars, our tax dollars, going to hire a firm to figure out how a local option sales tax can be implemented. So we're going to hire somebody with our tax dollars to go after more tax dollars. In my opinion, that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And we're coming back to you again for the next question.
Okay.
This is your chance to dream. Tell us, if the city of Little Falls had unlimited funds, what would be one project that you would set as a priority?
A women's peace and justice center to include a year-round greenhouse and community-run cafe to provide food for the needy. This cafe would be open to the general public, have no set menu, pay what you can afford, free to the needy, have all guest volunteer cooks, and proceeds would help fund a much-needed homeless shelter and a separate domestic abuse victim safe house. I have many other ideas besides that, but I think that our city needs that. I think every city should have a women's peace and justice center. If we don't have peace, we don't have anything. Without peace, we can't go about our business to do our jobs, to go to schools, and to participate in everything that every good community offers. Today, I'm wearing a shirt that says, "As a Christian, I support my Muslim neighbors." And the reason I'm doing that is because I believe it's important that we welcome our newest Somali Muslim community neighbors. I don't know of any group or anyone else in this city that has made any attempt to do so. I parked my car out front with a sign on it for months this summer, saying, "I love my Somali neighbors." The reason I did that was so that people in the community, Somali Muslim or not, would find me approachable, would maybe seek me out, that I could be one friendly face in the community. And I did meet the Somali Muslim neighbors, friends that I have now. Because of the gracious generosity of some of my peace group members, we were able to get enough money together so that I could go and purchase fruit and other goodies to present four fruit baskets to the different newest community members in our area. And it was during Ramadan. And that experience was really rewarding, and I would welcome people to get to know our newest community members. They're a wonderful, rich community. They have a lot of heart, and I think especially because we consider ourselves a Christian community, it's important to do that. I am a licensed minister, and my faith compels me to do things like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Raquel, what is your dream item?
I would like to see the bike trail come through. I think that this is a project that's been ongoing for about eight years now. The Minnesota Legislature, several years ago, granted the city of Little Falls or the Camp Ripley Memorial Veterans Trail $1.8 million. It's a great start, but having that bike trail come through Little Falls would bring in such great revenue. In Lanesboro, 15 years ago, there were one little teeny-tiny motel and one B&amp;B, and they were struggling to keep their doors open. Today, there are 15 hotels and approximately, and approximately 15 B&amp;Bs. And you have to book a room two years in advance in that town. The population of that town is 600 people, and any given night in the summer, there are 3,000 people there. So 3,000 people, let's say that's 1,500 hotel beds. Little Falls has just over 300 hotel beds. This year, the lodging tax that was brought in by hotel sales, hotel room sales, just reached $125,000. If we had 600 hotel beds, that tax would be $250,000. If we had 1,500 hotel beds, which seems like a lot, but if you have that many bikers coming through, you need them, we're talking $625,000 just in lodging taxes. And that's just with the number of hotel beds that were full, you know, if we were 80% full, if we were 100% full, we would be looking at close to $900,000 in lodging taxes. That doesn't include all of the other revenue these people come in. When these people are traveling, only 18% of their budget is spent on lodging. The other 80-plus percent, they want to spend downtown. They're not going to big box stores, they're not going to malls, they're going downtown, and they have 80% of their budget to spend downtown. Restaurants, shops, attractions, that's where they want to spend their money, and we need to provide that for them. I'm in the lodging industry. I see people all the time coming to town with money to spend, and we have, I think, eight empty storefronts downtown right now that we need to fill and offer them something more. So I think that bike trail is just a great, great way to generate revenue for our town. It'll raise our tax base, it'll provide jobs. I just, I think that's the way to go with, if I had unlimited funds.
Okay, great. Thank you, Raquel.
I'd like an opportunity to respond.
So we have 30 seconds?
I'd just like to say that the sales tax that Raquel was referring to is not only on lodging, it's on what you eat out, restaurant and sales tax. And those monies go entirely to fund the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I would question that we maybe aren't getting the money that we need back from the effort of our tourism effort in this city. That's an awful lot of money to fund just a tourism board. And that's another reason that cash-strapped Little Fallsians...
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Raquel, do you want 30 seconds?
Yes, I would like 30 seconds. Our lodging tax in Little Falls is 3%. Our restaurant tax is 0.5%. It is a Minnesota state law that that tax that's collected goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for promoting the town. Chris Vonberg has done a fabulous job of promoting Little Falls with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. People are coming to town like never before. The visitors' guides...
That 30 seconds goes quickly. On to the next question, and it goes back to Raquel. Do you volunteer in the community? And if you do, please cite specific examples such as your faith community, non-for-profits, or other organizations.
I have had the opportunity to paint three trash cans for Little Falls. So we've got the garbage art that was kind of the Convention and Visitors Bureau brainstorm. The Purple Carrot Market is another organization that I have been volunteering in. I am on the ownership committee. I got to design their logo, and I also was allowed to design their brochures, so that's kind of an honor. The Shops of Little Falls is another project that I was involved in. If you go in and look at the paint on the wall, I got to design that, so that was a really fun project. And speaking of the Shops of Little Falls and a community project, if ever there was a community project, this was it. We had single moms and doctors, we had 18-year-olds and 84-year-olds, and we had everything in between, working together to get this project done. And to date, the Shops of Little Falls has grossed about $41,000 in sales, so great At the Waller House Inn, as a business, we donate occasionally rooms to silent auctions for fundraisers in town. We give a tea party away every year to the zoo for their zoo medallion basket. I'm a member of the Little Falls Dandelions, and I'm, we also attend Grace Covenant Church, where we provide a meal for our church family every Wednesday night during the school year, and about once a month, I get to prepare that meal, and that's something that I do as a volunteer.
Okay, thank you. And Robin, where do you spend your time in the community?
Yes, I volunteer my time attending countless city council work sessions and meetings, as well as numerous city committee meetings. I video record, and some of which I provide for broadcasting on local access public television. I've done this for a number of years now. I publish all of these on my blog as a public service. In fact, my challenger here thanked me for being able to catch up with the city council meetings, because they're all published on my blog. They should indeed be on the city website, for full transparency and for the benefit of all in the community. There isn't any reason why we couldn't and shouldn't have had them on our city website for a number of years. Many cities do that. I've attended committee, community meetings throughout the state and brought back these ideas on video for Little Falls Access Public Television, as well as my blog. From time to time, I also have been a volunteer at the Morrison County Humane Society, and I want to mention that I organized the first annual Central Minnesota Peace and Diversity Fair. That was held in June of 2012, and it was attended by approximately 150 to 200 people. Little Falls needs to be a bridge for peace, especially because of the close proximity with our, close proximity with Camp Ripley. We desperately need racial diversity in our town, and we need to recruit racially diverse different business owners to come here and to stay here. We need some different faces on our city committees. Currently, the city council and every committee has only white people. There's a few females, but it's mostly male-dominated. I think we can do better than that. I think we have a moral responsibility in that we're not a totally white community to have other different races represented and listen to their voices as well. Thank you.
Okay. And Robin, we're going to come back to you for our final question today. In closing, we touched on a variety of topics today. Is there anything that we did not ask you that you would like to share with the audience?
These are some of my ideas not mentioned yet, some of which I've already asked the council members to consider. This year, this winter, the city council will finally be upgrading the bathrooms right outside this door, so that anyone who's fully disabled can actually enter them. I have been asking, pleading with, and urging the city council and the mayor to renovate our bathrooms so that they're fully accessible to everyone, so that you don't just come here to pay your water bill to attend a meeting, you can actually go to the bathroom at City Hall. That's going to be done finally this year. We need a homeless bill of rights and essential ethics... We need a homeless bill of rights and essential ethics policy, as well as a comprehensive conflict of interest policy. Brainerd has, and so do many other cities. Why not here? Something I asked for years ago. Why wouldn't any council want to be held accountable to a conflict of interest policy or an ethics policy? A human rights commission, something I asked for years ago. Its objective, public education to mitigate and diffuse disputes among parties before they rise to the level of costly litigation. A citizen advisory panel, chosen by lottery, not appointed by the mayor. Currently, all committee members are appointed by the mayor, which reports monthly to the city council. Overnight camping in La Berge and Mill Parks, something I asked years ago, to bring, to keep the tourists in our town once they come here. Rent-to-own local housing, low-income housing. People take pride in homeownership. They also pay taxes then, which increases our tax base. An end to taxpayer economic development-funded grants to prop up private business. From Charles Marone, a planning engineer and influential national authority on creating vital communities. Communities need to stop thinking they can import prosperity by attracting a big employer to town or undertaking some massive project. I agree with his belief that a more effective strategy is a bottom-up investment and that risky, low-returning projects too often become expensive boondoggles that haunt a community for decades. Also, full transparency and open government, an end to selective law enforcement, an end to selective city ordinance enforcement, recruitment of racially diverse business leaders and residents, and fair, unbiased reporting from the official city newspaper, the Morrison County Record. Finally, I would like the chance to become one of the few Little Falls city council members knowledgeable about and dedicated to the principles of the United States Constitution. I can't be bought.
Alright, you did just four minutes. Thank you, Robin. And Raquel, your closing comments?
You have a lot of good ideas, Ms. Hensel.
Thank you.
I think I've already touched on kind of where my passion lies and that is in the tourism industry. I think economic development, especially through tourism, I'd like to see more entrepreneurs, small business owners. And I'd like to see the city of Little Falls provide some incentives for small business owners, provide grants or low-interest loans. It's, you know, it's easier to borrow a million dollars than it is to borrow 30,000 for a small business owner. And so to provide some opportunities like that. I'd like to see our downtown shops, our downtown buildings all filled up. I think that's really important. Again, I'd like to see this bike trail come through. One thing that Little Falls, well, one area I think that Little Falls really excels in is the green industry. We've got the Sprout Market here now in Little Falls that is supporting about 80 farmers, local farmers in the area. We've got the Purple Carrot Market coming into town. Our high school grows its own food. That's amazing. It's a trendsetter across the nation. There are not very many doing it and for Little Falls to do that, I think is great. And I think we can really expand on some of these things. Our food shelf is a place that we could improve. There are gleaning programs out there where farmers leave things behind in their field and they will give it away to volunteers who will come and pick it up. I have a cousin who lives in Kansas City and she runs a cleaning program, gleaning program, where hundreds of thousands of pounds of food every year are given to people in need of food. This is food that's already grown that's going to go to waste. We just need to find people to pick it up and get it to the food shelves. So, a lot of good ideas like that. Thank you.
Okay, great. We want to thank Robin Hensel and Raquel Lundberg for being with us today and remind our listening audience that Lauren Boyum, the incumbent, was not able to be with us today due to scheduling conflicts and we tried numerous times to find a time and a date that worked for him. We also want to thank Great River Television. Mark is here with us today recording this for rebroadcast. And we also want to thank the city of Little Falls for allowing us to use this facility today. The chamber encourages you to be an informed voter on November 8. And if you have questions for our candidates, I suspect they would be open to those immediately following this session or anytime at your convenience. So thank you for being with us today and thank you to the candidates. Good luck to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you.